All right, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, June 20th, 2018 budget hearings. As you can see, we're short a couple people and we've some things. The schedule got moved around, so we're gonna go through this, but we're gonna start off with Ms. Julie Pearson.
Thank you. Just to remind the board, these are official enough meetings that we have to take minutes, and you can make motions through them, just like you would at a regular commission meeting. I have the stage.
We got a tough crowd.
Only a few more days. Pay attention! I have sent out draft one of the provisional budget, and I understand I have half an hour? Is that correct?
You?
Yes. The most important piece of paper or report to look at is the Means of Finance. This tells you, it's a summary of all the detail of the rest of the documents in your packet. Also, there's notes at the column N to just give you a little bit more. In the budget that was prepared and submitted by the department heads, met all the existing policies of the Board as we prepared budgets in the past. Of course, they bring in their budget requests. Any new FTEs are shown, are not included in your draft one, because those would need decisions by the Board, which I would suggest during the budget hearings. This budget came in at $101,268,279, with last year's budget at a little over, almost $96 million. The biggest increase is the Road and Bridge Fund of the $2.7 million increase, and that is not taxing funds or old or new funds. What it is, is it, he has submitted a budget that is using some of his reserves for the bigger projects, which is what they're there for. The current general fund budget only increased 1.9 million, or 3.1%, which is less than the current CPI and growth of the 6.76. So your budget went up less than your ability to tax, which means we would, we would then build up reserves if you use all the CPI and growth. The Means of Finance in front of you does not use any stored CPI. That is a decision that needs to be made by the Board. All levies will decrease if you use just current CPI and growth. You have a net of $339,000 is your net increase that you would need to place in the budget if you approved all the FTE requests. They're on a separate column, separate three columns on your budget summary report. As you can see, there's the number of employees, the budget just for those employees, and the revenues associated with it. Revenues are submitted a little bit differently this year. They are submitted, as they always have been, on your revenue summary tab, which puts them in order on fund and department. Because we fine tune those as we go through and make budget changes, and so that the departments don't have to keep those pages updated for you, I go in and make changes to other departments' revenues when I think they're a little bit off. I've always done that. So the revenue summary tab, as attached to this, is the final recommendation. And I see on here you've done something to my Means of Finance.
I have, and I just realized it, and I have the right file.
It didn't have the right numbers in it. The budget as submitted, again calling our attention to the Means of Finance, the budget submitted is 101,268,279. We are rolling over or continuing to levy a 5% extra, which is your 5% factor, column D, which is 3.6 million. We don't use that, but that's, we use it in our cash flow, and it just pulls forward every year. You have miscellaneous revenues at a total of $46.6 million. Cash reserves are 14.7, which is up to $2.7 million, but that is all in Road and Bridge Fund, which is a non-taxing fund. Those are all motor V fees and other government fees. Your tax revenue is $43,559,000, and that is up 2.1, and that is only, again, current growth and CPI for those. You have stored CPIs in column I, which were not used in this budget. If you approve the budget as a starting point for these budget discussions and make motions to affect this, that would be the easiest way for the public and myself to track it. If you approve this, not using any stored CPI, only using current growth and CPI, you will end the year of '19 with only $239,000 short of your 18% goal. You should listen as normal, these are budget hearings, you can make motions as you listen to the department heads. I will be keeping track of those motions that you make with regards to any reduction or changes to their budget. Also, I need you to act on the new FTEs by separate motions, so that we know. And then, somewhere along the line, you will have to make the decision as a board whether we do or do not use any stored CPI, or at what level you want the levies to be at. You can kind of do that. I did suggest in my memo to you that you do use all the stored CPI to raise our minimum cash reserves back up to the 20%. I think that would be a financially wise decision on our part. We were commented on that our reserves are getting too low for some of our low spots in our years at 18%, and we could not weather a storm or an emergency if it happened at that low point without pulling into our special reserves, which we are also including in that 18, or in our year-end reserve. So with that, if anybody, the next tab that, on there is your budget summary in your packet, which has 2017 actual expenditures, 2018 annually approved with supplements, in some cases if they're an ongoing program. Then your 2019 has two columns. It's draft one, which is submitted according to current commission policies. Increase shows the difference between the 2018 and the 2019. The revenue line is column S, and what tells you that, that ties back to your revenue summary tab for the department's income, that ties directly back to their specific department and/or programs. Then, column T is your tax burden. That tells you how much each department is costing you in property taxes. So when we talk about reducing budgets, you need to reduce their net tax burden. That's where we need to make reductions, so it affects the Means of Finance. And then percent of tax burden column tells you what percent of that funds revenues, or excuse me, taxes they are costing the taxpayer. Take for instance, on A&amp;N Appointed Attorneys on the first line on your budget summary. This line right here, doesn't highlight on this one. It's a highlighted one. Its budget is $440,000 because of the number of capital cases, even the huge amount that we increased it in 2018. You can see we barely raised it enough over what was actual in 2017, when most of our capital cases were only in preliminary phases. 2018, I don't think will be sufficient enough, just so the Board's aware of that. So we gave it another jump up in 2019. This is not a budget that you have any control over at all. And this is just for the A&amp;N Appointed Attorneys. Shows you a $65,000 increase, shows you there's no miscellaneous revenues coming in on A&amp;N. They don't create any program, we get no state revenue, we get no federal money for those. So that tells you that the whole amount is supported by a tax burden of $440,000 by the employee, or by the taxpayers, which is 1.1% of the amount of the column H, or excuse me, column G. My columns are labeled different. Column G on the tax revenue, which again is not using any stored CPI, but that is available to you. On the revenue summary tab again, trying to save paper, this is the summary of every revenue line item that the Pennington County brings in. The fund is in the first column. Column A, column B tells you what department it is. It ties to their accounting department. That's how they're listed, they're color coordinated by department. But you can also tell by this column in here. These are other numbers that tells us what type of revenue it is, charges for goods and services. Easiest for you guys just to look at what it's called. So you can see on instance, on the auditors bunch right there, this is what we bring in for alcohol licenses, video lottery licenses, advertising fees for those, district formation fees, lien payments that come over the counter, reissue check fees, lien payments county and the CCB. But we don't do, that is the amount of money on that lien payment CCB that is, that is collected by our CCB credit collections, and we have to show it as a revenue, because the expense to pay them, rather than netting it out, comes from my budget, which is mostly in professional services and fees. And then refund of prior year expenditures, that's if we get a check back after the end of the year. But that's how detailed your revenues are. And again, these are the official ones that are tied to the Means of Finance, and have been altered as we go through the process. So might not match exactly to any of the specific ones that the department head refers to. The rest of the, then there is the cash analysis, which is an important, this is the whole thing that I go through to tell you what your estimates are gonna be at end of the year. We didn't make copies of it, because right now, all it is, is current budget estimated revenue. It's just a duplicate, and has very few assumptions on it. You've not made any supplements, but one this year, so it's not an important document. All of the information on here is tied back to your Means of Finance in the column L, which is percent of reserves, and then the amount. I do have to call attention to a couple funds for the Board's discussion as we go on. The Library Fund, since that was, those contracts were renegotiated several years ago, when Deb and George first joined the Commission, and raises are now limited to current year CPI, and the Rapid City contract was the one that was reduced the most. We have in the past levied that full amount of opt-out, because we knew the amount that we could levy, plus the opt-out, would soon be less than the current contracts. That is no longer the case. So you will, I don't know when that contract is coming up for negotiations, or what the Board is thinking they will redo that, but you should look at if you need to continue to levy the full amount of the opt-out every year to meet those contracts. It just kind of depends upon when that's going through, and I don't know when that timeframe is.
They renew annually.
Renew annually. So really what you should do is renew that annually prior to budget time. Maybe if you could change the timing, so that you knew exactly how much you could levy in that. You can lower the amount of an opt-out any one year, but you still have the authority to levy the $188,200 the next year. That's not the case with current property taxes. Once you lower them, you lose that ability to levy that from then on. So you can play with that $188,200. If you see that you're going to need a big jump in the future, you'll want to continue to build up the reserve. Right now, I think it's either $10,000 or $15,000 extra that we're levying over and above the amount that we need to support the current contracts.
Ms. Julie, maybe with your help, you helped last time. In fact, without you, probably wouldn't got where we are today. So if the Board's okay, maybe I can have Julie help me, and we can do that, make sure we're doing it right on the opt-out, or what we need to do for the future of that fund. If that's okay with the Board, me and Julie can look into that.
For future?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then the other fund, as I've mentioned to you in the past, several years ago, the county fire funds levy was reduced almost in half, which again, since it's not an opt-out, once it's reduced, it stays reduced unless you do a current opt-out. The 2019 budget exceeds revenue, which is miscellaneous revenue, which they do get some delinquent taxes. They also get some money from miscellaneous fire departments, for some reason, you can check with Jerome on that. They exceed by $49,948. You'll need to lower the budget to equal tax revenues of the $216,000. You either need to do that, increase revenues from other sources, or you're going to have to do an opt-out to maintain that budget at its level. So 2019, you can start that process now, if you're going to cut programs, or whatever you're gonna do to maybe build that fund balance up a little bit, or you're gonna have to make a major type of cut. You could try an opt-out, won't pass, guarantee it. People in city limits do not pay this levy. I don't know, I'm not on the fire board, I don't pay any attention if Jerome does any work in the city, or responds to fires in the city. That is one thing you could stop, because they don't pay. He's only paid by property tax, property owners outside of any municipality. It's a limited. So if you went to an opt-out, that is the group of people that would vote on it, and they may, I don't know. It's a fine group, just like they did the library opt-out. So they may or may not approve it.
So tell me, sorry, Ms. Julie, tell me again what the options are, I know the opt-out.
They're in the next to the last paragraph on the letter, Barb, Deb. The 2019 budget exceeds what they can raise in property taxes and miscellaneous revenues, which is, don't quote me, about $30,000, and mostly money from other entities, from other fire departments. So your choice is, as with anything, to balance it, you have to reduce the budget, you have to increase your revenues, either your miscellaneous revenues, which the largest portion comes from other fire departments, I don't know if it's a reimbursement, you can talk to Jerome about that, or you need to increase your property taxes back up, which the only way you can do that at this time is by an opt-out. And if you're gonna try and opt-out, you should time it, so that we can put it on the ballot issue, well, won't make any difference, because we don't have an election next year. You could do it on the November 1, otherwise a special election can cost between $45,000 and $60,000 for an opt-out. I did mention Fire Fund last year, but nothing was done with it. Again, the number of new FTEs is a net of only $339,000. That is a total of, that portion right there. Your budget totals are 909. You're bringing in $570,000 in other revenue. Basically, what that is, is all the miscellaneous funds, or the non-general funds, they're supported either by other entities, or their tax revenue that comes from general fund. So that would be a direct increase to general fund. And remember, when you approve those FTEs, the revenue will come with it. But if you don't approve the full FTEs, then, or not, none of them, we have to go back and determine whether any of those revenues to support those new FTEs will come in. So if you went in and you thought that, oh, we're not gonna approve the $9 million, and this is just salaries and matches, we're gonna gain $570,000 in revenues to help with our reserve, or lowering the levy, or freezing levy, whatever you wanna do, that is not the case. The revenues tie specifically to these new programs. So don't be thinking that. It's not your saving grace. And I was very specific in the way those revenues were brought forward, so that I could say that. Some of the instances, if the, well, take for instance, if you go up here to Buildings and Grounds, makes total sense why they need four new people for your new building. They don't have any revenue other than taxes to bring in that. But then if you look at the Detox, which is funded mostly by other sources, you will be budgeting for eight new employees. He shifted three from, that's what this minus three is down here, so he's lost three in law enforcement, so this is only a net five, if you consider it a law enforcement. That's gonna cost $214,000, but he's bringing in $280,000. To me, that's a no-brainer. You're bringing in more revenue than it's costing you. So that difference will help general fund. Then, Operating Transfer, this is where, to 911, excuse me, 911 is a special revenue fund, which means we cannot put property taxes into it. It has a lot of revenue coming in from other sources, the 911 fees, the city. This is where the difference comes in of what we would be taxing for those new FTEs. That's why there's not an FTE count in there, because it's shown down in the dispatch budget, and it would have doubled it up. If you look at the planning, the new FTE, that's the reallocation of the drainage fee, which I think this is the point in time when the Board is going to discuss, that's a split of those drainage fees, that all of it has been going by Board motion into the Road and Bridge Fund. This is allocating anything over a certain amount to the Planning Department, but it is taking it away from Road and Bridge. That is uneven, Stephen, that FTE. Then you look at the two in the State's Attorney's Office, again, they don't bring in revenue, they're like, they just spend it. One or two, that sounded wrong. I knew it was gonna when I said it. These are not bringing in any new revenues for these, so there's no. MacArthur Grant is not in this budget at all. We will have a budget supplement every year, as it comes forward, as we know for sure that we're gonna get the money, and those departments that are using it decide the split. So those supplements and FTEs will need to come forward every year. So that's why MacArthur Grant is not, is not shown here at all. And then this goes through, these are your other budgets, which will, all of these will be, you will make hearings on those. And they're alphabetical, as well as the general fund are alphabetical, so it's easier for you. Revenues are numerical. This 100 section here, if you're wondering why Janet and I don't cost, do anything, it's because we take into account all the work that we do to bring in, we call all this the funny monies. Funny monies that come in, and through the Treasurer's Office, delinquent taxes, tax deeds, bank franchise, that we then have to divvy out. So that's pretty generic.
So Julie, just a question, as we go through all this, from my understanding, the budget's pretty, you guys did a really good job with the staff, and yourself, bringing forward the initial budget, and we should use what's presented to us as a starting point, and as we go through the hearings, we can decide whether we want to reduce FTEs or some other costs, and do, as you said, by motion.
Yes.
And then with those motions, you can change the numbers around to see what the actual is gonna be. My thought is, is then we hold, once we get through all that, we have another budget hearing, meaning, and then we look at stored CPIs, where we're at, so we can make that decision. But from my understanding, from what I've heard from some of the staff and so forth, that this is probably one of the best budgets it's been for quite a while, as presented.
It's a pretty solid budget.
And that's, I think, due in part by the staff, everybody coming forth and being honest, and presenting the best they could at this point in time.
Yes. We originally, the previous to draft one, the shortage in 18% goal was, was over half a million, and I sent a note out, and I said, okay, everybody go through it, make some changes, reduce, bring in more revenues. I went in and looked at revenues, they're pretty solid, raised some revenues where I thought they should be raised, based off of conservative history, and we lowered it to the 239. So we've kind of already been through a voluntary cut, and an increase in revenues that makes it a little bit tighter for us. But yes.
So to be clear, with this budget that's presented, with no FTEs, we could, without doing anything, could pass?
Yes.
Even being 239?
Without using stored CPI. I feel very confident that the $239,000, because my assumptions that I make are very conservative for future over collections of revenues and under spent budgets, we can make that up, even by the end of this year, to an 18%. That's not a large difference. And I wouldn't make that recommendation, even if it was over by 239. I'd say, leave it as is. Give us a little room.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was done.
Okay.
I can talk for a long time on budget.
So I'll look for some questions, the rest of the Board has. Deb?
So Chairman, what you're saying is to accept the budget as a starting point with the negative 239,071, meaning if we need to bring it up 18%, we could, by the end of the year, probably, again, be maybe close to 19, because of over collected. But then the shortfall would be the 339,36 for FTEs, but we could start by approving this budget, and then make the cuts. And Julie, explain, we took the cuts from tax burden, you said, if we're gonna do that?
Yes, when you get to the point of, and the reason I say start with this, not a Yes, when you get to the point of, and the reason I say start with this, not approve it, but accept this as the starting point budget, then every motion you make, it's very clear to everybody, and history, as we put it in the minutes, what you're making that reduction to, since there's nothing there yet for them.
Okay, so if I wanted to approve FTEs or not, what?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so if I wanted to approve or accept the FTEs, we should probably start at the starting point at two thirty-nine, and then start making the cuts or telling people, okay, so if we want six or ten FTEs, then in order to get that revenue, it's going to have to come through the tax burden area in the revenue, not the revenues, but the tax burden, and that's where I would reduce.
Yes.
Or have...
I, I would not tie it into the column M, the difference. What I would tie it in is you're going to accept this from, for the starting point as presented, and you can list the budget and the revenues, because you can then make decisions on the FTEs, on the amount of taxes, on everything else. And as you make, and as you go through budget hearings and you make motions to cut or add or not so much, then the motion makes sense.
Well, that makes sense more to start from somewhere, because otherwise, we just start picking different areas, and I'm like, okay, I'm not getting all this. Start where what we already have, and then take away or add to from that starting point, is what you're saying.
Yes.
It seems to make, I mean, when I do my budgets, that's what I do, and it's a lot easier to track, because when we do, the other ways that we've done it, I think it just always confused me a lot.
It, it confuses everybody, and by using the word, accept this as a starting point, we're not approving it.
Okay.
All we're doing, and what these hearings are, are only to discuss, per posted agenda, the budgets that they have submitted, which includes their number here, which they've submitted to Holly, which is in your books, plus the FTEs.
Okay.
And as you make a budget cut, if they're supported partly with miscellaneous revenues, you don't have to make that decision of what it's going to cut in revenues, but we will come back with that.
Right.
Because we can't, you can't calculate it that quick. You can calculate a reduction to budget fairly quickly.
Well, what I see is you get a starting point, you go through everybody that wants to speak, and then this, you know, and we figure out, okay, Ron says no to for that person, and we make that motion, and then, what I'm saying is, then we have somewhere to look at where we're cutting, what we're doing the whole time, instead of trying to figure out, again, every, every time we've done budget, it's very confusing, because the way we don't have any starting point, and where are we taking away from? And again, listen to everybody, and then come back, and everybody make their, their cuts from that starting point is, it simplifies it.
It, it does.
Let me give a little different take.
Okay.
Just a little better explanation. This is a good starting point, that's what you're saying, start from there. We go through our hearings, listen to everybody's budget, we justify, either justify or don't justify it, then we know what those numbers are. So she knows them, so then she can change them as we're going through.
Yes.
Then we, after we get through all that, at the end, we set a special meeting and see where we're short, over, under, whatever. Then we decide CPI, where we want, where we want our reserves to be at, do we want the, so yeah, you're, you're, you're on the right track, Deb.
So do kind of what we're doing today, and then do a work session for, okay, we've listened to all the presentations, we've done that before, didn't we, Buzzcruel? Listen to all the presentations, and then cut instead of the first day, just, because that always confused me, just saying, okay, I don't like that, I don't like that, let's cut it now.
I think the secret is, is as we go through the budgets, we make motions, so it's clear to the auditor's office what changes are what we want in the budgets presented, but we're not going to know the totals until the end.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And I can, if you make motions, if you see something clearly that's been presented in, in a budget, and per policy, these budgets do not include new programs, they're not supposed to. That's where the new FTEs comes in, unless it's supported a hundred percent by revenue and does not include any FTEs. So as you're going through budgets, and you see that there is something in a budget that just trips your trigger and you don't want to approve it, you can go ahead and make a motion. And every morning, I will have a corrective means of finance for you, as quickly as I can, so that every morning, you have a good idea. And then especially if I can have a couple days between Friday and maybe if you meet middle of the next week, Thursday is my last day, so if you have it the middle of the next week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, then I can come back with that. Otherwise, Cindy will be finishing it.
So Ms. Julie, so then we'd, if we wanted to do with the starting point, then we just make that motion today, or we make it, when do we do that, next week? I mean, so we have somewhere to start with as a better today, like...
I, I would do it so you all know, so any motion that you make today and following makes sense to people.
Okay, so make a motion to do the starting point now?
Yeah, or, I don't know if you need an official motion, or if you wanted to say, this is the document that we're starting from, Holly and I will both keep draft one.
I would prefer, if that's what we're going to do, we make that motion, just like we're going to do the rest of the meeting. But I think time getting to be what is. Ron, did you have some questions?
Do you have an issue with that, Ron, with the starting point, or do you have a better way to...
You gotta start somewhere, just as any.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So...
So, except, so the motion is, accept the budget as presented as a starting point, would be my motion, right?
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the budget as a starting point. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We got, we got to that point.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. How about ready to take off here? I, see, the first one up is Public Defender's Office. I was at the meeting where, and I voted to approve his budget that he gave us, so I'm satisfied with whatever he presented.
Are you saying, are you making a motion? You're good, Richard.
He's doing a marvelous job, by the way.
I didn't see the adjusted, was you supposed to come up right after?
Yes.
He'd come back at eleven?
Right now.
You want to do it now?
Yeah.
I do, I, I'm going to go, but I don't have any questions for him. I think he answered all of mine that, when we had our meeting.
But we can't vote on there, they were talking.
You can't, no.
So...
We'd vote on it when I get back.
Oh, okay, oh, I said, we can hear him out, and then you...
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
I just, I get, all right.
See you in a bit.
He's just churning.
Buzzcruel, you're not helping anybody right there.
All right, let me find you here, we'll get you going.
Okay. And how do I start? Somebody here. Public Defender on the back, way at the back.
Eric, apologize, I missed the meeting.
No problem.
That's a huge one, I don't know how long this is going to take you.
You know, I said it would only take me fifteen minutes, and I will, I will stick with that timeline. And I want to thank Holly and the commission for allowing me to, to get in here a little bit early.
What do you got going on?
So, looking at twenty seventeen and now into twenty eighteen, and...
I don't know if you guys can proceed if you don't have a form.
Yeah, you really shouldn't even be hearing him or contacting any county business with lack of a quorum.
Okay, let's not do it then.
So Eric, we might have to reschedule you to come back.
So I'm sure you adjourned the meeting, didn't you, Lloyd, when, right before, Ron left?
They recessed, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We're in recess, Lloyd.
Sorry.
You don't want to go through this and have to go through it again, is...
I'm gone, so...
Here July third.
I think I, I know.
We'll just, I'll put him after Judge Feifley, when Judge Feifley does the court's presentation on the third.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, we're coming out of break. Mr. Vargo.
There we go. Good morning. Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. So I'll start with the easy part, the base budget that was in the budget that you just accepted for working purposes, I think is a pretty solid budget from us, and I, again, believe that we brought you something that recognizes the realities of where we are and tried to cut where we could cut. You'll notice that in that budget, we are a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and some up on personnel. A hundred and forty-one of that obviously is related to the COLA and the step increase that we did give employees last year, so the other portion of it relates to the, we did add one additional seasonal employee for the summertime. So I draw your attention then, under the operations budget though, we are thirty-seven thousand dollars down. That's related primarily to some smaller equipment purchases. A lot of that is computer-driven. We're on a, the cycle is never quite even for IT, they like everything every three years, but when you buy some at certain times, so we're actually in a down year for that, but we've held the line on pretty much everything else there. And then I would also draw your attention to the witness budget that we're part of, and we have reduced our request by a quarter with a savings of about twenty-eight thousand and change, based on the fact that we anticipate that we feel less need for experts now that the Kleintobe and Hearth matters are not defbened the cases. So we're hoping that that nets us some, some wiggle room there, and I felt it was appropriate to reduce even the amount that we request, although I'll point out that in the last five years that I've been here, every time that we've had that budget, we've turned money back to the county and underspent that budget. So we are very careful about what we spend on it, but I thought for budgeting purposes, so that the commission knew, I didn't want to try to hoard that into our budget. So ultimately, if you take out the COLA and the step raise, we're submitting a budget on that part of it that's lower than the budget that we submitted last year. Which brings me to part B, which is probably not the easy part. And I think that it's a reality, and I think ultimately, you'll probably hear some of the same things from Mr. Witcher when he talks to you. We are both facing difficulties in recruiting and retention. I think his are even worse than ours, I think he's having trouble even getting people at the lower end of the scale. So far, we've been pretty good with that, but we've got some problems as it relates to retention of people at anywhere near the upper end of the scale. And I understand, I kind of adopt the theory that we are the training ground for prosecutors. It's not unusual, it's kind of a feather in your cap as the state's attorney, with the US attorney is poaching your people, if the judges are poaching your people, the governor, the attorney general's poaching your people, the city attorney's poaching your people, but eventually, that does have a toll on you. And I'll just point out that the city of Spearfish just advertised for a city attorney, a salary of ninety-three thousand dollars a year. That means your civil chief sitting over there has been with this county for twenty-five? Twenty-two years, would have gotten a pay increase that was noticeable to himself and his family if he'd taken that job, to go man a one-man office and have one-tenth the headaches that he's got here. And so I think that that kind of illustrates where we sit in the pecking order. And not only these people, every one of those places that I've listed, every one of my people that left, left with a pay raise of ten, fifteen, US attorney's office probably twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar raise. And they're leaving to places where they're doing less work. The city attorney's office here has five lawyers, doing essentially what the two and Angela's kind of the floater on that, two and change attorneys do here. The United States Attorney's Office has six line attorneys, so they have six people plus a supervisor. Last year, they filed one hundred and fifty-two criminal matters, which means on average, those line assistants are handling twenty-five cases in a year. I got people that present twenty-five cases to the grand jury in a single month on felony cases. So the bottom line is, we are running our people very close to the red line, and we are doing so on really nothing but esprit de corps and morale, and that'll only carry us so far. I asked Berkeley Fiera, who's my, who's our intern this summer, to do some checking on some comparable departments, and asked her to look at Billings. Billings has a lower crime rate than we do, but they're about the same size city. They have eleven more employees in the state's attorney's office, or county attorney's office, I think they are there, and four more criminal attorneys. And to give you kind of a description of the effect that that has had on the office, when I took office and into the next couple of years there, we have usually four or five people that are working on victim crimes, top end of our felonies, or most experienced people, not counting myself or Laura, but that next tier of most experienced people that are dealing with the rapes, the burglaries, the homicides, you know, crimes of victims that we need to make sure we're getting them right, the bottom of that scale, when I came into the office, was an attorney who'd been with the office for ten years as a prosecutor. If we lose one more to the US attorney's office, and by the way, they're hiring two this summer, I will almost guarantee you that one or more of them will be ours. If we lose one more, the person who's filling that role will be less than three years out of law school and less than three years as prosecutor. So it has an effect, and it's not like the old days, I know, Ron, you and I have talked about this before, yes, we're a training ground, but in the old days, you could kind of count on the idea that the state's attorney, maybe the chief deputy, would handle that top tier of cases. There are too many of those for us to handle them all now. We need that next tier of people, and we need to be able to retain them. And part of it, I know we can't talk about all of the different things that would be possible, but part of it, I think, needs to be that we not ask them to put in more work for less pay. We did a quick informal survey, asked people to just keep very clear track of what they worked for the month of May, and not surprisingly, in this room, you've got people that were putting in twenty and twenty-five hours of overtime in a week, but pretty much every attorney that I've got was putting in overtime. That's not unexpected, but mostly in the ten to fifteen hours a week range. That's a lot to ask when you're underpaying according to the salary structure. And part of what has happened this year, I think, is also illustrative of the fact that there is a need for additional personnel. We had one secretary with a catastrophic illness, and he's coming back now, and hopefully he's going to be okay. But the bottom line is, we had to adjust for that. In an office of fifty-some employees, we are so close to the red line that we weren't able to shift people to cover for him, we actually had to hire outside. So we brought in a contract person. Now, because we've been so short on lawyers, right now, we're three short on lawyers. I have it in the budget, that's not been the problem. But what it shows you is that we are operating at very close to full capacity, and you can't ask people to operate at that capacity forever. But I think that when you bring in a contract person, that is by definition less efficient. You got to train them. And we got lucky, we got a really good one down the road, I'm kind of hoping we get to keep her, but you don't get to give, bring him back. So if I hire her now, and I need another contract employee next year in February, she's likely not going to be available, the good ones go off and they find a full-time job. Overtime has been something that has gone up and will go up again this year, and that's obviously highly inefficient. Not only are people working less efficiently by the time you get past forty hours in the week, but by definition, you're paying them time and a half. So, I mean, overtime is the quintessential inefficient way to expand your capacity. And so what I'd ask you to do is kind of take a look at the budget that I submitted in its totality, and I know that we approved part of it, now we're going to talk about FTEs, but together, we spent just shy of one hundred thousand, or will spend just shy of a hundred thousand dollars this year between contract employees and overtime. And we've saved on the operational side, close to seventy thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand dollars. Those two figures alone would make up for the difference of the two FTEs that we're requesting. Of the hundred thousand dollars that hopefully we wouldn't need in a contract employee by definition, and the money that we're saving on operations side, I think show why it is that it would be much more efficient to do this through the FTE mechanism than continue to, continue to do things through contract employees and overtime. One other thing that I got to mention, we run the risk of burnout. I've gotten really good people, and they do this because they love it. Every single person in my office could walk out and get a ten thousand dollar raise tomorrow. There's just really no doubt about it. So they do it because they're committed. But at some point, they start to look around and they say, I do have to provide for my family, I want to give my kids different opportunities. And again, what we have to be able... And again, what we have to be able to do is to do something that adds to their morale. So if I tell them, you're gonna be the lowest paid employee in the county, or the lowest paid employee attorney in the region. And you're gonna do some of the hardest work in the region, and you're gonna do the most work in the region. I need to be able to come back to them with something that says, we're still looking out for you. We're trying to make sure that we have all the tools, and that means all the people. The question of wage compression has been brought up here, and again, I know that's not something we're dealing with directly. But the bottom line is, it is no longer a hypothetical at the state's attorney's office. We had an employee quit. And she flat out said, I know you can't give me a raise. I just wanna go where somewhere where the rules are fair. And so that has been something, and again, we lose a good person to that. And then we have to train and replace. Anything that we can do that assists in morale and in making the workload more manageable. I think is important, and I'm asking you to do. We obviously have a continued increase in crime. That's kind of the bottom of this chart. I use DUIs as a benchmark. DUIs have remained more or less steady. They rise a little bit with inflation or with population. So we're up about ten percent over a five year span on DUIs. It's a little more than population, but not much. Then you look at the drugs. We're up a hundred and ten percent on drug cases. We're up fifty percent on aggravated assault cases. Homicides in the nineties were running one to two a year, and frequently were running zero. That's one of the charts on the back. Frequently, we didn't have any homicide, didn't have a homicide in a year. Now we're running between five and ten a year. And so the old paradigm of the state's attorney just handles that, or the chief deputy just handles all of those. Ron, I'm sure you remember, when we had a homicide, it was Dennis and Jay and me, all three walking in the court together. We couldn't do that now, certainly on ten different homicides, or eight different homicides in a year. So again, I know the sheriff is gonna talk to you a little bit about the increase in crime. I used, just to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples, we just used rapid city numbers. So they're not the totals, they're not the same thing the sheriff's gonna give you, but they illustrate kind of where crime is going. And again, we can kind of see, some of the crimes are doing pretty well. Larceny's down, burglaries are more, you know, down at least a scotch. But violent crime continues to be absolute epidemic. And then there's the change in practice, and that's the chart that I gave you on the front page of this. Related to county funding for defense lawyers. The green, blue, and yellow bars there represent what we have allocated to the public defender's office. Dakota Plains and Court Appointed Attorneys. The pink and the orange or red, that's the state's attorney's budget. The orange or red represents our civil division. I probably should have included a third color, because about seven hundred thousand dollars, at least by the time you get to the right hand side of the chart. Is really just a pass through budget from our mental hearings. I don't control how many mental hearings I have. I don't control what we, what expert we use, the QMHP. So that's really a pass through budget. So really, even what I'm showing you overstates the budget that the state's attorney's office has. To designate toward criminal prosecution. And I would also point out that the. Bars that represent the defense. Don't include anything that has to do with anybody retaining their own lawyer. If you hire a lawyer, none of that money shows up here. So we're dealing with all of that. And I have no objection to how you guys spend your money relative to the public defender's office. And I understand you have almost no control over how you spend your money as it relates to court appointed counsel. But you do need to understand that it changes the practice for us. When we walk into a courtroom, if there are more court appointed counsel who file more motions and put more hours into cases. We respond to every single thing that they do. And we have to, if we're going to prosecute our cases successfully. And so when that number goes up, it is not simply a, well, you do your case, they'll do theirs. It changes the practice. As Julie pointed out earlier, the abuse and neglect experts and the way that that's been rising. We both have to prepare for those, cross examine them, deal with them at court, have a more lengthy hearing because of that. And conceivably and frequently, hire our own expert to try to rebut it. And so the, you know, we try to stay in house as much as we can. We try to stay cheap as much as we can, which is why we've turned back money from the witness budget every year. But the bottom line is, it changes our practice. Which brings me to my last point, which is something that I believe Mr. Witcher and I. Both want you to try to find a workaround for us. And I have one that I'm going to propose. I don't know if he's going to go with exactly the same one, or if he's going to have a slightly different. I think he had a, in mind, a half FTE. One of the things that has been problematic for us in recruiting. Not retention, but in the recruiting side. Is that law students are on a certain schedule. On campus interviews for the University of South Dakota, Creighton, and Nebraska are all in September. And we'll go out and we'll interview for our summer interns. And then in the last three, four years that I've done that, I've had to talk to three Ls, people who are about to graduate, take the bar, and say, boy, we really like you. But I've got an opening right now, and I can't afford to keep a spot open. Again, we're too close to the red line. I can't afford to be a lawyer short in the misdemeanor division, or to move a felony attorney down and help out with the misdemeanors. So I'm hoping that you'll still be available next August, and you'll still consider us. Well, as you might expect, we don't get the cream of the crop when we do that. So what it would be nice to be able to do is to have, I would ask for truly an unfunded FTE. And that the only purpose of it is to allow us to make an offer either to that rock star summer intern in August when we finish with them. Or on campus at the, at the on campus interviews at USD or Nebraska, wherever we go. To be able to make a firm offer and say, we're making you an offer, we've got a job. And I would commit to you that we would leave, if somebody quits close in time to that, we expect that person in August, right? That new hire comes on in August after the bar. That's the way it always works. I would commit to you that I wouldn't hire anybody after May. Three months we can make do. We can, again, rally around, little esprit de corps. We can make that happen. We do it all the time. We're three short right now. We've got one coming in July, one coming in August, and one hopefully coming home in October. Carla MacArthur Harris, who was deployed. So we're hoping we'll, we've got three openings and three in the pipeline. But again, that's kind of an illustration that would have been nice with Carla coming on in October. To be able to hire somebody back in April, May. But I wanted to make sure that I didn't go past our FTE count. If we had the ability to have an unfunded FTE, we lose people on a regular basis. With the size of office that we have, it is not realistic to expect that we're gonna go. Nine months or even six months usually without losing an attorney somewhere. But I also don't ever want to put myself in a position where I've made somebody an offer, they come on in August, and. That'd be the one time that nobody quits for a year and a half, and I gotta come back to you guys and explain it, why I have an FTE out there. I will tell you, I will find the money in the budget. I'm not asking for you, if I've made that gamble and it doesn't come out, I'm not gonna be coming and asking for more money. But what I will be coming and what I would like to be able to do is to make that firm offer. And so I think that that's probably the easiest mechanism. To ensure that we can start getting a higher caliber of law student. Because what really happens honestly is that those on campus interviews, the federal and state judges get to do their interviews a week early. They usually get to make the offers to the, you know, the top law review types. Well, frankly, I'm not always interested in those folks anyway. I want people who can think and talk, not just people who can research and write. But the bottom line is, it'd be awfully nice to be able to walk in in September and say, here's your offer. Be great to see you in August. And with that, I will stand for any questions you have.
So. Mark, on your sheet, under FTEs, it doesn't say that you have any requesting for any.
They asked us to do that in a separate sheet, so I think it's on the back page. It's a separate, Julie told us to submit the budget, and then the FTE separately, I think that was the board's correction.
On your budget summary, remember on your means of finance, that one, it shows.
So you're really asking, requesting two and a half? Well, I'm requesting two and an unfunded one. So the number, the hundred and fifty five thousand, eight hundred and forty five, that's the number that I would ask for in terms of budget. I would ask for the unfunded FTE regardless of what you do with the other two, to allow us this mechanism to get better recruits. But I am telling you, for all the reasons that I indicated.
So Mark, you have, person, under personnel, you have a hundred and twenty eight five increase, and then your two FTEs are a hundred and fifty five. Eight through five, so you're about two hundred and eighty four thousand with new personnel increase.
Well, that's not all new personnel. A hundred and forty one of that is from last year's COLA and step increase.
Okay, so. What I'm seeing, that might be true, but the hundred and twenty eight is through. The new changes that we made?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That hundred and twenty eight is actually, that's why I said, if you don't count the COLA and FTE, which was about a hundred and forty one thousand for us. We're actually submitting a budget that's thirteen thousand dollars less than last year.
Okay, and then tell me about Marcy's Law and the changes that that's been, because remember, we increased your budget by what, four, six FTEs? Because, because of, I think it was two and then four more, wasn't it? Or was it a total of four? Okay.
It was four, and I had told you that numerically we would need six, but that we were gonna try to hold the line and make it only four.
Okay.
And we managed to do that. One of the ways that we managed to do that is by having one of those people effectively be a. Not really an IT person, because she doesn't run the computers, but to handle forms and just kind of efficiencies within the office. Create the forms for the other victim advocates to use, do those sorts of things.
So what's the change from the law that they, they just passed?
So the change, the biggest change that will hit us is that, and we hope that it hits us hard. You know, because it would mean that we would have. The ability to cut back in that department.
Okay.
Is whether people opt in. So this is now a true opt in. It is set that they have to opt in. What they didn't change, which means that we will still have an impact, and we won't know exactly what it is until we've worked with the statute for a while. Is that they did not exclude corporations, which I was trying to, I worked pretty hard on that and failed. So Walmart and Costco and all those people, whatever. They all still have the right, under Marcy's law, to be treated as a victim. We do have some businesses in town that have refused to opt out. Meaning that we've been notifying them as required. Now, whether they will take the affirmative step to opt in, we don't know, or, you know, they would have to opt in on each case. So if it's truly for them, just a, nah, it's no problem for us, you deal with it, then maybe they won't opt in. We're kind of hoping that that happens. The other thing that we didn't do in the Marcy's Law revision was exclude nonviolent misdemeanors, which again was something that the state's attorneys lobbied pretty hard on. But the Marcy's folks basically promised to swamp us and leave it exactly where it was if, if it didn't go that way. But having changed it to an opt in, over the next. Three to six months, we're hoping we can get a good picture of how many people are really opting in. We'll see a falloff. There will be less required. We're actually utilizing what we anticipate to be the initial falloff. As I explained, we have a contract employee who's working as a victim advocate and a secretary who's been out.
Okay.
When he comes back, we're actually gonna put him into a position where we anticipate he probably won't be working forty hours a week. His health isn't gonna allow it. And we're gonna be using him as a victim advocate. We're gonna have to pay him his full salary because he's got sick leave and whatnot, but the bottom line is, we're already kind of making use of that. To kind of place people in places where we can hold our costs down and not have to have additional contract folks. So we're gonna have the contract person working as a full timer. And then our regular employee, who I anticipate. Physically will not be capable of forty hour weeks for quite a while. That's kind of our first savings from Marcy's Law. He won't have to have anybody else covering him, so we won't have to ask anyone else to do overtime. To cover for the fact that he's not doing a forty hour week. And we will, I think by the end of the year, we will have a very good picture of exactly how many people opt in. The corporations will be a big driver. The ones that haven't opted out, they may, if they still opt in, then we, we have obligations to them. And of course, we still have statutory obligations. But I'm hopeful that that'll be in, over the course of next year, that we can. Let some of that happen by attrition, hopefully, and that in the twenty twenty budget that we would have fewer victim advocates.
So you're gonna be, you're gonna take that down by two or something like that in twenty nineteen?
I don't wanna tell you a number, I don't wanna tell you a number until I know who, know what it actually happens. But I can tell you that we already are looking at that, and we will be monitoring it in the next six months or so.
I guess that's what I'm saying, and so. With the two FTEs, you don't really know what's happening with Marcy's Law. I know last year what happened to us, who remember we had to put, you know, come up with that increase.
I would. I'm gonna refer to Mr. Baskin.
Both of those are going to be attorneys, I take it?
No, one's an attorney and one's a secretary. Our fourth floor, the civil juvenile diversion, which does actually generate revenue, no matter what your auditor says. Is in need of some. Support. And as are juveniles themselves and abuse and neglect, so. There'd be somebody up there who would help out. That's where the contract people have gone. That's where most of the overtime has gone so far this year.
And part of the problem is, after reading in the paper, that. The law schools rate of passing the bar is at an all time low. I mean, when I took it, I think we were at eighty five, ninety percent, it's fifty now. And when you take out of there the people that go to peer, you take out daddy's little girl who comes back to the, or his, to his firm. That'll leave you a whole bunch of qualified people left to hire. That's the problem.
Especially not if I have to wait until, say, March, April, before I'm willing to wait and have an open spot for that long. So no, you're absolutely right on that.
My thought process on this, and I think even with Eric's, I think you guys have done an outstanding job doing what you do. And I, and I see the hours that you put in with some of the cases that we had. At this point in the budget, I think FTEs, I think. I would like to see us add them so we can, then when we have our special meeting, then specifically, you know, take them down, go by one by one. But one of the things that. I would say is, you know, we have a compensation committee, meaning, you know, and I would suggest. You know, we had, the county before I come on, had did a congress study on wages and so forth, the way I remember, right? And I haven't really seen those numbers, but I, I truly believe we need to get back up to where we need to be and how we, how we get there. I think that's the first start, is, is that way. I think if we're throwing. Throwing dollars at something that we don't really know, I, I know you've done some studies, but. I think we need to have a firm ground to stand on if we're gonna designate money to, to changing the wages. I think we need to.
And I mentioned that really as a backdrop to say, that's not something we can do today. But it does say, if that's where we are today, we have to do something to help those folks out. You can't be the hardest worked, most overworked, lowest paid person in the, the community and really expect to hold people for very long. You get some. Laura's still here.
Yeah.
Jay's still here. Josh Hendrickson's still here, but I understand that, you know, he may ask Governor Dugard to change that, so. You know, we lose good people, we expect that, but it does feel like. It, it has been a particularly hard timeframe, and I think it's in part due to the fact that we have not kept up with the caseload in terms of the personnel load.
You know, I, I believe you. I think we need to find ways to do, to have the training section and the higher up and find that tier. But I think it takes a group of people with more minds than mine.
Well, and more time.
Yeah.
Couple of my employees are on ankle monitors, not by the county, but just behind.
Well, you know, and, and I'm sure everybody works over there, and everybody works at the public defender's office. No way is the county keeping up, can keep up with, with what other attorneys make, especially defense. I mean, there's no way in hell we can do that, but. You know. They have to be dedicated, or, or we lose them, and you're right. I, I've never complained or faulted a person for. I, I've never complained or faulted a person for leaving to get a better job. That's, I, I, I'm doing that.
The reason I am so confident that, the reason that I'm so confident we're going to lose one is that I've already gotten background checks on, so, and.
So I guess.
And I was not able to bring myself to lie about them and say, oh, great, as long as you get him before lunch. After that, usually he's drunk, you don't get much work out of him.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I have no problem whatsoever. I'm giving you an unfunded FTE, that's, I understand the predicament there, I, because I heard the same thing from Eric, so.
If, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
For procedural, I would suggest you make the motion as for the unfunded FTE effective today so that he can go out with this August bunch, if, if that's what he so desires. And then the board can decide whether they want to make motions on each budget as you go through, or, which would be for these two additional FTEs, so that at the end of the day, we can have something. Any commissioner at any time can bring that, any motion or addition or any budget back up. So it's not like we're trying to disclude Mark and, and George, but that way you've done it, you've heard it in, in budget hearings, and the people know when we meet next, what at least these three people feel.
So I understand the workload and everything, Mark, on this, and I know how hard it works, but, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of people in the county doing that same thing. It's, it's what happens in government, and, and do I think you, I would, this is my opinion. I'd rather increase the pay of some of the people you have and retain them than start over and hire some more, so. But then there's the other set of the workload, but I also like to pay people, you know, a fair wage. So I'm understanding both sides of that, but also know we gave before last year, and I know things have changed because of Marcy's Law, but there's other areas in this budget that people also have not got FTEs before and increases in their employees that, where they needed it when things were increased. So buildings and grounds and other things that we have added, tons of buildings added, and things that they need also is a need, and they're looking like they need four, so. I, today I'm not ready to make that motion or make a motion on it, because I just want to, I need to visit with you a little bit longer on some of these needs. And for me, I, I, I'm not ready to vote on FTEs today. I'd like to visit with Mark and other people a little bit more on it.
Well, thanks, Deb. I think my thought process on this was going through this budget. We accepted the original, and, and I figured that if we come through the FTEs, we could add them in, and during this special meeting, we could do the research before that time for the special meeting, and we could take them away. We could take them away, but I think just for the purpose of budget, this is what it is with them. And how do you find financing them is the way I was looking at it. So it's not like I'm, this is a done deal.
Right.
That was the only right, the reason why I suggested that we add them in there now, and then when we have our special budget meeting, we're going to review all of them.
Right.
And then we can research up until that time and, and go with that, but we have to, the wants and the needs will go through.
Is that going to be fair to, to you? I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem doing that, but is that giving you an expectation of getting two people and then we take them away from you in a month?
I've met you. I know you guys, I'm serious, I know you guys are going to consider these seriously, and I know that whether you vote, if you vote yesterday, even if you said that that's, you know, really what you intend to do, that doesn't always come true at the final budget time.
And I would say.
And I know that if we had a two-to-one vote today, we have two more commissioners that could change that result, so.
Well, that's not, Mr. Vargo, hold on a second. So my bottom line is, is I would say no today because I'm going to do the research. I'm not going to prove it, and then, because I got stuck with that before, where you said yes, and then you said no, and then people are like, you know, you said yes. So I'd rather just have those FTEs and every, all the things that are going to be in the budget that we basically have to vote on. His FTEs, the other FTEs, because by that time, I've done my research, I'd rather not just put the three thirty-nine in there and then go from there.
And I'm fine with that. If you want to say that you're not going to consider any of the FTEs now, and you're going to consider them all at the next special meeting, I can do that as well. Then you have all the FTEs basically in one room, too, where you can kind of, it's, it's up to you guys, obviously, but I don't. From my perspective, Ron, it doesn't make a difference one way or the other.
So we accepted, I think we made a motion to accept this as the preliminary, but that did not include his hundred and fifty-five thousand.
None of the FTEs.
No, it did not.
And then the other thing I would say, though, is I would ask you to adopt Julie's suggestion as it relates to the unfunded FTE. If you guys are okay with that, and particularly if we have a unanimous decision on that, where two additional commissioners can't change it, I would like to be able to have that in my pocket at the end of the summer. We've got two great interns this summer, or in September, when I go to the law school to do interviews.
I'd look for a motion.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Buskew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. So let me gather this from the commissioner's present. Is you guys want to, would prefer to hold off on making any decision on the FTEs until you do them all at once at maybe the special meeting, but just hear from everybody's coming forward instead. Was that what you kind of like?
Probably, because, you know, we're kind of, as we always do, we're going to have to make some critical decisions on, and, and rank these things of what's important and what's not. I, of course, lean, I think that the public leans toward safety, public safety, and they want to get, keep drug users off the streets, you know, and, and I'm sure we don't want to have noxious weeds growing in our ditches, but I think they'd rather keep the drug dealers off than, than have the noxious weeds. I, I don't know. But that, that's just my personal opinion, you know? And it's those decisions that, that one's easy, but it gets, they get tougher down the road, you know? So I don't know what I'm trying to say. I guess, leave it out until we get the other two here.
Okay.
And chairman?
That's what I, what I'm gathering is, I think that's what we're going to probably end up. If we're going to do it for this, we should do that for everybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I was trying to tell you today. So get, get first the starting point budget as presented, that the two thirty-nine, then have, what, Mark will probably come in, Lloyd will come in, Buskew and Hancock, and Holly would have the list. And then on the special, that's what used to do, members of city council, then we'd go through the list, and then we'd vote, you know, are you taking this way, or you putting this, what are you doing with, with your request that you're asking?
No, he lost me. I'm talking on employees.
I know, that's just employees, because what's going to happen is Buskew's going to come in, and he might say, well, I think equalization, they could cut thirty-five thousand from here because they're not doing this, this, and this. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's not just going to be FTEs.
I'm talking, that, I, that's what I was specifically talking on, is the FTEs. If we're holding off on those, I think, that's the consensus that I get, is that.
That's fine.
But you're, the rest of the present, presentations, you're presenting your budget, what you expect, the FTEs. It sounds like we're going to hold that off to the special meeting and have that discussion, but that's what I gather.
Much appreciated. I just ask you to come into the next one with an open mind. I, I think it's important. If we could have gotten rid of Marcy's Law last year, we'd have a lot better information now, but we, we still don't know that we'll be able to cut those positions.
Okay.
You're asking quite a bit to have us come in with an open mind, but.
It's true. In this day and age, it is a rarity, but I have faith.
I think we're pretty young, pretty young here.
Well, I, I just take the moment to thank what, what you guys all do. You know, I've seen the hours that you guys put in and, and the dedication that it takes, and I've gotten the phone calls at nine o'clock at night, so I know they've been putting in the hours, so it, it doesn't go unrecognized. I appreciate you guys' hard work.
Glad you know. We, I know that the Civil Division is more visible to you, most of you, because you see what they do for all of the county agencies, and feel bad, I didn't trot off even the, the highlights of that, but the bottom line is, they're horribly overworked, but the criminal folks right now are in very much a similar situation. It'll feel a little better once we get some new people on, even though they're brand new. One is coming on board is a law clerk over at the Seventh Circuit, and the other one just graduated this May from USD. So we'll have two more people, and assuming we get Carla back and the Army doesn't decide to keep her yet another year, they have guns, I don't. I don't really argue with them much. But assuming we get her back, she's at least been in the office. She was just a misdemeanor attorney then, and she's had a lot of experience with sexual assault cases in her service, so it'd be great to have her back, but I'm looking at that, and I'm looking at the fact that we're already probably going to lose one, maybe two more in the next two to three months, so. That's got me a little, that's got me a little jittery.
I'd be very interested in trying to figure out how the ways where we could do, reduce the workload and, and work on that area where they can have a life.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's helpful. That's the, again, if we can't increase the wages, we can increase the quality of life, and that's what I'm trying to do here.
Hard.
If there are no other questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you all.
Mark, I'll call you, communicate with you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Julie, I'll send somebody down, I'll come down with it.
Who, where are we at? Well, we ended up picking off.
Holly, are you next?
Eric, quick trigger, because it would have been legal.
Oh, Julie's budget?
So we probably have.
We're doing Julie's budget.
Julie?
Getting rid of two expensive people in this office that should have really helped these out.
She didn't hear you. Go ahead. I don't think she could bother.
Hey, I have several budgets for you. Julie Pearson, Pendleton County Auditor. The first is the auditor's budget. I'll talk to you about the changes in that, which basically you will see a, a reduction in salaries that's due to my leaving, and you're going to have a new auditor, even though there will be a payout at that point for, for sending. The auditor position is funded half elections and half in auditor, so that's why, really, you'll see a reduction in both. Other, other than that, in the auditors, it is simply a stand, stand the same budget with some reductions in travel, and as well as we're using up our balance in our postage machine. And through work with our software, we are going to ACH's on most of the warrant checks, so. And we've already done that with the utility companies and all of the tax apportioning checks, so that is quite a reduction, if you think about it. If you look at the number of checks that we mail out in a month's time. Other than that, it's pretty much status quo for the auditor's office. Any questions?
Why, that's a pretty good increase in group insurance for the auditor. How come?
Because we're bringing, we're changing from single coverage and employee plus one coverage to you have just a full family. Budget-wise.
Great, we're going to see that.
It may not end up that way. Our last replacement FTE is coming in in August, and then we'll know what that coverage will be, and can make an adjustment at that time.
Big decrease in professional services and fees in your elections and in supplies, is that?
Oh, the professional fees in elections is easy. We're not having electronic poll books.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah, and the way those work is we simply, we didn't buy any software. It's just to use, we had to buy fifty-five laptops, which we're seeing if the company will take back. If not, we're going to have fifty-five laptops for the county to absorb somewhere. But it is a fee per election use, and for a normal election, it runs about sixteen thousand dollars.
Is that a software company going out of business now?
They can't. They may on, not that I'm aware of even on the electronic poll books, but it's the same software company that wrote and manages our statewide voter database, which we even had issues with that on election night. Only my poll books took the cake. But just so the board is aware, everything that we did on election day was according to law. I know there's been comments that we shouldn't have had stoppage, that we should have voted people provisional because of the lack of paper registration lists, which should have been out there. We just didn't get them in the boxes to send out. That, we held them open. That's what the law says to do. We've been criticized on that. We had accurate counts. We've had a recount. We know that was off only one, and that's because they polled a ballot, so we already are certified to that. So every step of the way, we were verifying that we followed state statute, like it or not, that's what we had to do, and that all the votes cast after seven PM at just the precincts that had to be kept open for the amount of time of stoppage, we call it, which has happened to us in other elections. It was just a big deal in this one, as it should have been. Those were held separate, and we know where those are, and so if there's a lawsuit from whoever, for whatever reason, again, we followed state law, federal law, and we had the state attorney represented up there for the entire day of elections. So they were prepared, we were prepared for complaints that we'd had pre, pre-election, and that's why Mark was there, and he talked to US attorneys as well as the Attorney General's office as for what to do with the stoppages, as well as through the Secretary of State. But our counts are accurate. If we were off any count, we counted twice until we, we counted each precinct until we got the same number twice. We'll go through and we'll post elections. So far, of the, half of the precincts we posted, of the forty-four, there hasn't been one single double vote. And if there is, those people will be prosecuted, and there's a way to do it under a paper system also. But that numbers, I will be redoing the election budget to remove those for next year. So that'll be in draft two. There's some corrections already in the, in the elections. Otherwise, that election budget is a off-year. We only budget for one election, and that will be the city election, and they pay us for that, and that money is considered in revenue. Otherwise, there's the normal things that we do in an off-election year. One of them is the purge process, and that's done in off-election years, which is, is an extreme postage drain. And elections are getting to the point that at some point, we're going to have to increase the number of people in elections. Not on my watch.
So bottom line, on, on your budget, it's gone down forty-two, nine eighty-seven, and on the elections, one thirty-six, one eighty-four.
Yeah, it's pretty easy on elections because it's a non-election year for me. It's a city election. Nothing compared to, to what, even, you'll even see a larger increase in a presidential year than you will in a gubernatorial. The difference is basically, we order a hundred and some percent of ballot stock for testing, as well as to make sure everybody has the right to have a ballot. You don't want to run short of ballots. That really is an embarrassment. But where the added expense is, is in turnout, so therefore you have to stack those precinct boards. And we're going to be adding some additional precinct workers to the precincts that we have different ballots at to assure that the person is getting the right ballot. We're going to have special training for those people, as well as separate ballot boxes, separate, separate books. It will slow us down some, but we don't have minds to speak of anyway, other than at the close of the polls, which we're allowed at, by law. So we think that that is a, we, we don't even think it's going to cost us twelve hundred dollars an election to hire maybe ten more poll workers and attribute a specific ballot type or style to one person for each one. We try and do it too cheap sometimes, and it gets us in trouble.
So did, did the healthcare trust board raise the rates, let's take it?
No, I, I can get into.
Why is it, it looks like it's two hundred and seventy-six thousand more?
They didn't raise rates, but the number of claims go up every year. We're in pretty good shape, and we have some reserve in healthcare trust, but you have to look at, um, what the amount of claims are, whether we have enough budgeted, as well as the number of claims we have over the stop loss. Because we have to, we have to pay those bills, and then we have to, um, get reimbursed. So you got the revenue over here, which, you know, you don't wanna rely on too much. But they realize that they have, um, the need to, um, increase, just if you look on claims paid, that's where the increase is coming.
Good, thank you.
And Delta Dental, the charge went up to the healthcare trust. But because we'd already submitted a no increase, then healthcare trust will absorb that and decide what they do later on. Based on the numbers as of today, healthcare trust is, uh, same, again, basically the same, same coverage. The more people you have on it, of course, you're gonna have more claims. You can't guarantee that, and, um, so, but it does have a fairly healthy reserve, but I don't know if it's met the requirement by motion for healthcare trust. Any separate questions on that? Domestic abuse is the other budget I have. That's basically an in and an out, and used to be, we had a pretty steady fifty thousand dollar budget, and obviously less people are getting married licenses. As well as part of that income is a partial divorce filing fee that goes into that. What comes in, we're required to go out. And, um, we just, just for numbers sake, I might to get it as close as we can, but that's the only reason that, that we'll see that. We, and, and it's pretty protected because what we collect in one quarter, we send out at the first of the month of the next quarter. So we will know with September checks, if the forty-three thousand dollars is enough for spending authority. If it's not, then we can come in with a supplement because we've got the additional revenue, so it doesn't affect reserves, and it's its own fund. The last one I have is the bond budget. It's under accumulated bond budgets or accumulated building. The only thing in this fund at this point in time is the bond payments. The fare is paid off. It was being paid off under that fund, so that's why you'll see a, a switch in, in levies in that. It's pretty specific. We had a rewrite. And, um, a refinance, it's a partial finance, and without going into it, we only partially refunded a bond issue. And we'll be coming back every year because, till twenty twenty, because we've got that money. Because we could only call part of the master plan bonds, so it'll be coming back every year at the end of the year with what we know that payment will be. But it's, it was just a guess, and the money's in an investment account. Pretty status quo on, even on that. The other thing in the accumulated building is the eight hundred thousand dollars that you give a year to, um, for capital improvement projects that's run by buildings and grounds. And he'll talk about that in his budget presentation. But this is the bond. And if you will look, if you wanna look, in column L, that is the amount of balance do you have on those bonds. And that's all I have. I'll stand for any questions? Pretty much status quo. But I will be redoing that election budget to remove those electronic poll books fees, which are all professional fees, and just submit that in the second draft without coming back to the board. There's a couple of other corrections I have, I had to make, and that'll, those will be in draft two. And they'll be highlighted in a different color. Notice there's the orange in the budget summaries, and those are the people that went through and made cuts when I asked them to between the five hundred and the two hundred thousand. The next draft, they'll be highlighted, and that's why I can, I can keep track. But that's what those color codes all mean mean to me, and they're important to me to be able to track things, so.
Well, thanks, Julie. Does anybody have any questions for Julie?
Pretty status quo.
Yeah. Thanks, Julie.
Easy budget to do. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Julie. Is Eric still gonna make it down?
He's gonna go on the third.
Third?
Just you, Holly?
Do the commission office budget quick.
I'm gonna make a motion to raise the salaries of the commission to five thousand dollars a month. Because I wanna see the newspaper.
Might get more people running.
Okay, where's Holly at in commission?
Now that you're leaving, go ahead, busker, and then Lloyd can second for you.
Okay, we're ready for reality.
All right, so commission office budget. No, okay, one significant change to point out to the board, and that is in your travel line, and then that is in response to the discussions on having one or two people attend the NICO conference each year. Um, that's about three to five thousand per person, depending on where they go. Um, if they go to both, if they go to the Western Interstate Region Conference. Um, so I inserted the ten thousand dollars there. But the rest of it is pretty self-explanatory. Um, Ron's right, this is the time that the commission needs to decide on what they feel the appropriate salary for the board is. I did not change it from last year. So there is no increase put into this budget, but if the board feels there should be, this is the time that I can make that adjustment.
What's her salary, Holly? Per year, per person?
You are at eighteen thousand, fifteen hundred a month.
Do I put that in that died for lack of second, Ron? You only put your five thousand dollar increase in as, like, died for lack of second?
As a retired
Commissioner?
stipend, yeah.
Eighteen thousand, one fifty?
Okay, here's my question.
Fifteen hundred a month.
Looks like salaries went up nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is that all you and Joan get?
So Joan and I ended up on the end of the scale for the automatic steps that the board granted as of your anniversary date. Joan and I were both hired in November. So for twenty nineteen, both of us only get the increase for the month of December. So that is why you see such a small amount for our salary changes, is because we only get one month of a change per the new policy of the commission.
I don't understand it, but, um, take your word for it.
Well, you get one automatic step effective the month after your hire date.
Okay, so you wouldn't get it until next December?
So because we were hired in November, way back when, we're
After that, it'll all make.
We're the unfortunate ones that only get a month worth of a benefit instead of being hired earlier in the year.
I understand.
So, um, just a couple of questions, Holly. The travel, we had said something about, because some people take the travel on ours and some people don't. Do we budget? Because, um, tell me again, um, because if one's four thousand and one is zero, and you can expect that that person's gonna do four thousand, so do you put that in our budget?
I do. Each commissioner is allowed to take travel expense for any miles traveled in, in completion of their commission duties.
Right.
Some people believe in taking the travel expense, some people don't believe in taking it. That's, that's each commissioner's right. So I base it on past history of what I've know that some have done. I know you don't take it. I don't put anything in for you. I know other commissioners that live way far out of town have a lot of miles that they claim. So it's, it's just all based on past history and what I think that they're gonna do. But, you know, Commissioner LaCroix had brought up a different thought process in that maybe it's time to look at it differently and give each commissioner a set dollar amount, and this is what you get to spend and go and do and
Train.
Training, budget and everything, whereas it would be, it could be viewed as more fairly.
But tell me, Ms. Holly, so what exactly is travel for us? So anytime I go to an event, anytime, if it's my choice and I wanna go to ten different places to look at some people's areas, I get paid for that?
You could. Anytime you go look at a plant, a property for planning and zoning.
Yep. County business, sure.
Yep. Anytime you come to the office to get your mail.
That, that, I don't mean to interrupt them, but that was one of the reasons why I started discussing some of this with Holly about travel and training, because people confuse travel and training as two different things, you know, they, they think it, you know, like the NICO, the, the NICO conferences, man, we could have, we've got a load in it. We pay the dues, but we send nobody. But yet Sioux Falls does, and they're a voting member, and they're, they're actually involved in some of the committees. That's why that was important to me. But where we come up, where I come up with, as Holly had said, and I think that we need to have some good discussion about this, is we do, Pangton County's spread out so much, so some commissioners may use the tra, it's called travel for mileage to pay to go do what they do, and some don't, but I'm almost after talking with, uh, the people from Mini Haha, what they do is they set aside so much for each commissioner. If you use it for mileage, you use it for mileage. If you use it to go to the event, you it, it gives them accountability. If, if, if you're giving them three thousand and, and they wanna go to two trainings a month, uh, for this year, and they have to out-of-pocket pay for fifteen hundred to do do it, then they do it.
Just a question, Lloyd. So based on statute, could you say twenty-five hundred and somebody was three thousand? By statute, would you still have to pay them? Does that make sense? Is the statute say that if, you know, do you see where I'm going?
I hear what you're saying. That's something we'd ask.
We can limit it and say twenty-five hundred, but does the statute say that I, no matter what, you guys make your motion, and if statute says that I've traveled three thousand dollars worth, then I get paid for it?
And I think that the statute says may. So that would be something we would have to do in additional research in the event that if it says may, the board may need to adopt a policy underneath of that that says this is how we will treat it, because that was my number one question, is if somebody gets twenty-five hundred and at the end of the year, I get a bill for thirty-five hundred, what am I supposed to do with that? Do I process it? Do I put it on an agenda and send it back in front of the board for them to approve it?
That's what I'm saying.
That's where it gets a little sticky.
And it makes it accountable, and I think, um, if we could do it a different way, so you did that every quarter, so she could track it instead of, you know, and, and if you didn't put it in that quarter and you missed it, then you missed your travel thing, and then you do the next one. Because I think if you're trying to do a budget, and you, if it's thousand dollars and it's average, you kinda know that, but if you're going three and four thousand, or you have new ones, and you have no idea, holy cow. You know, if you had three new people, at three to four thousand each, that's the most I've seen on people's. She not gonna have that in her budget.
No, no, and that's something that we're going over. She's adding these increases as is to to account for what we, we, that I've talked about during our, our, some of our meetings.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Lloyd, but I just wanna make sure for statute, we're doing the right thing, and, um, and, and if you limit people, I think it's more honest.
I'm not, my concept's not to limit people. And the discussion that I had with, with the gentleman at Mini Haha's, he said, this is what they get. They're responsible. He says, some use it, some use none, some use it all. So they turned it back in. It, it's their own accountability, but I understand what you're saying. What happens if all five commissioners end up using all theirs, and then we have one that went over his mileage and wants that paid back? I understand that. That's something we have to look into, but the whole part of the discussion for each person was just plain accountability for each one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and I don't mean like, to be mean, but I'm just saying that. I, I just wanna make it so, it's with statute, and number two, again, for travel and different things. I'm not opposed to that, because I think it's a great idea, that people that, I like National League of Cities. So it was informa, very informational for me, because then when we did Twalley's and different stuff like that, that's where I, I got all that. You know, went visited places back in the day. Um, and, and did some of that stuff with the downtown people, so.
I think there is some, and you might remember this, Ron. There's a way you can set your salary, you know, you have to do that the first two, the first meeting of the year. And I believe that is the motion that contains whether you, we pay you a set per diem, or whether we pay you salary and mileage. So I would suggest that Holly look into that and come back with your different options. But you can limit your travel, just like you can limit mine. Other than for official duty, then, you know, then there's a fine line, and Jay or Mark could probably tell you that. Official duty to me is when I think I need to go to a meeting or not. We could argue whether you have that authority. So I think that comes into, can you limit them to three thousand? The board has policy in place that all out-of-state travel for you has to go through the board as an individual motion, so you can control it that way. I don't know if you can control mileage reimbursement requests, because somebody has to travel from Creighton. Gladys Babcock used to have to travel from, from Creighton. The size of our county, the mileage for a commissioner to get into work should not, he should not be penalized, he, she, because they live farther out. Whether that commissioner decides to support that, I, I think, and, and Holly can split that out because we have like ten thousand different line item details, and keep official travel separate from other travel. And, and out-of-state travel from in-state travel.
I think this is a good starting point and a great discussion, but I think that other part of it was just discussion so far, but but she, but she was, she did add, add more to the budget, because there was interest in that we should start doing it.
Well, the per diem and travel, and just tell us, again, you know, I'd like still to have that discussion of what people want, instead of wait till the first of the year. Um, we're gonna have different commissioners, and that might change, but I think, um, I think we've been pretty fair on a lot of things that we've done, so. And then anything else, I didn't know we could do phones and stuff. I, I, when I was, um, um, chairman, I took half for a few months, um, of the phone, because my phone was ringing off the hook. And it was not as much business. Other than that, like this year, I didn't. But, I mean, I think people should know everything that they, if they can have a phone, if they can have insurance, if they can have that. I didn't know we could have all that, and not that I took any of it, but.
Yeah, I think that's where the, the new commissioners that come in will have to sit down with, I believe, HR John, and kinda go through with the offering of the insurance and what's all available, and how that goes, because you're probably right. It, it, sometimes I think it gets missed, but, uh, I think we could go
We can do that.
We can get that, and I think we can have a discussion prior to January first if, if you'd like to, to check, to check on those things.
But what if we want Holly to go, or Joan, you know, to a travel thing? Do we have that in our budget?
I, yes, and
Yes, yeah, we do that.
Yep.
And have it at a meeting, and invite the new commissioners. And if you're gonna do that, then it has to be after the general election, or you invite everybody, and I don't know, you know, there's an independent in my district, and independent in your district?
No, nothing in mine.
Well, they got until August to file, don't they?
No, independents and Democrats already had to file. Uh, both, uh, the Republican primary candidates of Ross Connect and Drews have, um, general competition. I just don't know what their numbers are.
Yeah, and, and invite them, so they get in on that conversation. And they're up to date, and then you know how they're gonna vote that. You know, you sit down here the first meeting in January.
Yep.
Get asked how much will we get paid, and, and, well.
They gotta be involved in that. Yeah, their first meeting, that's the first. They gotta be involved in that. Yeah, their first meeting, that's the first thing we vote on.
But, but we do have money in there for Holly, right?
Yes, that's what part of this is too, is if, because quite frankly, I think she needs to go once a year, just at least once a year for turning two.
And I'm gonna throw this out here and then maybe look at that salary portion of anything on hers that we could look at for what she does.
NICO wouldn't hurt any, that would be a good, especially this year, it's at Opryland in Nashville.
Well, because of the raise last year, it goes on hers. And, and what, you know, because we changed that and not that we should change people's on others or but I'll just keep saying this from beginning to end, who does most of our work?
Well, I think, I think you did good with the budget, Holly. I think you added up enough in, into the travel. We may end up, we'll see next year. I think there is a fall conference. I think we could probably squeeze somebody in to go to if they wanted to go. That's in Idaho. Not Nashville, but Idaho.
I guess the only, sorry Lloyd.
Go ahead.
Um, separate train of thought for me. The only other thing is there, I may have, I'm, I want to talk to Julie about our health insurance line item. With three new commissioners, or I'm sorry, Deb, not you. Two new possible commissioners coming on. Plus, I've had a change in my own family and my entire family is now on county health insurance where that's not budgeted. I just don't want to be short in health insurance. So I want to double check with Julie that what I should have in there for everybody.
Okay, I think you're, you're right on for thinking that.
But that's the only thing that I can see that might possibly change, but everything else is pretty, pretty status quo. I mean, our publishing went up and I kept it up just because you're going through comp plan. We're gonna have some ordinance amendments coming forth. Our minutes are getting outrageous for what we're spending to publish our minutes. They're just, it's crazy what we spend. I mean, we can spend three thousand dollars for just one meeting.
We've got to keep doing that because there won't be, if we take our minutes out of the Rapid City Journal, there'll be one page.
And, and we hardly print anything in our minutes.
I mean, we can't do anything about it, but.
Can you imagine what Rapid City pays on theirs? They put everything in. And that's one reason we went to just publishing motions. So there wasn't any grandstanding for one thing, but it's, it's a cost. But you'll never get rid of it.
No. We tried every year and that goes nowhere. You get bad press.
There are questions for commission budget.
Good job.
Thanks, Ms. Holly.
Right, thank you.
Did we have Eric coming or?
Recessed until tomorrow if you'd make a motion.
Eric can leave, Busscrew.
Oh, he couldn't make it. Oh, he's moved, okay.
Sorry about that.
It's been moved to recess till tomorrow morning. Seconded by Busscrew. On favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.